Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to call the meeting to order. If you would, please stand with me for the Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Hart, would you lead us?
Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic of which it stands as one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite, just as for all. Don't we see our chaplain again here? Mr. Clerk, would you, please?
Heavenly Father, we thank you for this opportunity to gather the seating to discharge the duties that you've given to us in regard to business of our county and looking out for our citizens. We just thank you for, again, that opportunity and ask you bless us on all that said and done, that we may act in a way that's pleasing to you and Jesus' sake. Amen.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. First order of business would be the approval of the minutes from our previous meeting, which the commissioners received a digital copy last week. Do I hear you gentlemen need some time?
I move the minutes to be approved as presented.
Second? A motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Motion passed. Moving on to presidents and commissioners' reports. Most of my meetings are in the next couple of days, and we had a holiday last Wednesday, so two of my meetings were postponed till this week. But I did attend the Criminal Justice Board meeting. Mainly just standard business and grant approvals, and I did see that Marty Hatfield reached out for the award of our grant in the amount of $45,000 per year for, I believe, the next four to five years. And I went over most of this in our previous meeting, but I did meet with Mr. Ronkin, President of Planning, and had some conference calls with he and his subcommittee. And most of my report on that will be next meeting. I did attend Riverfest, one of our newer festivals in the county. It was a great success, the biggest Riverfest turnout thus far, which I think is in large part due to the fruits of investment and tourism and Tina Ladd's efforts and Commissioner Aglenger's efforts with the CBB. When Darren Thorn spoke, he asked the crowd to raise their hands if they were natives and raise their hands if they were just touring the area. And I would say drastic majority were tourists, which was good to see in some ways. It's good to see the natives out as well, but so very, very popular event and large turnout, and it was good to see lots of government groups there to protect the river and environmental groups. So everybody's collectively made it a great event. I did meet John Todd Hart to speak about budget topics, and met with Rolfe and spoke with the clerk about courthouse improvement grant. Also met with Rolfe and talked to Keith McIntosh on the congressional delegated spending. I know that we had moved to approve the roof renovations of the Cape and Bridge Community Complex contingent upon waiting duration to see if the CDS spending would come in before we would have to spend general fund money, because once we go down that road, we wouldn't be allowed to be reimbursed. And Mr. Ronkin, would you mind coming up to the mic and telling the commissioners what you heard from the Senator on that brief topic, please?
Good evening, Commissioners. I talked with Keith McIntosh about noon today, referenced the CDS earmarks for our two projects, Springfield Sewer and the Cape and Bridge Community Complex. They have made it through all the committees that it had to go, they had to go through in both Senator Capito's office and Senator Manchin's office. They are with the subcommittees up on Capitol Hill. There are more jumps or hoops to jump through with those. He will let us know, probably you, Commissioner Cannon, as soon as they come out of committee, if they survive the committee. And he says there's no reason to doubt that they wouldn't survive the committee, but he feels that in an election year, people are actually going to try to play nice with each other. And he felt that more than likely, since they've already been through several levels, that they will survive. But of course, what we wait for is it getting into a bill that has to be through both the Senate and the House of Representatives, and then signed by the President. He feels that we will know whether or not we have a chance for that money probably by the end of August, beginning of September. And what he means by that is it'll be through the subcommittees, it'll be through the committee, and it'll be waiting, basically, the back and forth that will inevitably occur with the Senate and the House of Representatives. But he also said that that's not at the point that normally they'll go back in and you'll lose your project. So if it gets to the point at the end of August, beginning of September, they're still there, there is still money against those projects, then it's just a matter of when Congress decides to get together and agree. And that's where we're at with them.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Yeah.
So was it 30 days, gentlemen, or 60?
Forty-five.
Forty-five days. So long past that is when we'll most likely know. And that was the wording of the motion, so I was just bringing that to your attention on that Cape and Bridge Community Roof. So, thank you, Rolfe.
Okay. Thank you for the update, sir.
You're welcome. Other than that, phone calls. I see Prosecutor was here. I spoke to her briefly. But other than that, I've no further report. Commissioner Aglenger?
Thank you, Commissioner. I have very little to report on, but I will mention that I did meet with the gentleman representing the windmill project there on the eastern end of the county. Just a, basically, a complimentary informational meeting on their part, and I did, was willing to attend that, and just to get a better understanding. Don't have a whole lot of information. I do know that that project does continue to develop, is basically what I got from Obviously, there's folks in the community that are worried about that, so I feel that I should, you know, report on what I've heard, but I did take that opportunity to talk to those guys. And I will say that they do have things a little better explained and more well-aligned than the solar companies do. Again, I'm not saying one way or the other at this point, or making any kind of proposal to the Commission, but I did want to take that opportunity to gather information and understand it better. And to, basically, two things come out of that, is that that project does continue to develop. And again, I feel they were, came to the Commission, at least, with a much more open and transparent approach, and certainly had things a little more organized than what we saw with the solar company. And that's basically all I can report on that for now. Other than that, I got a few meetings coming up, and I was super busy with the hay last week, so I did miss my Parks and Rec and CBB meetings, which I hardly ever miss, but just had to do that. So I will get an update from those two boards for my next meeting. Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Hart?
Commissioner Aglenger, that wind project, is that the one on Cape and Springs you're talking about?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Okay. I tended to originate a meeting with, well, as a matter of fact, I had to do it via a phone conference, because I also did the bid opening here at the same day, at 2:00, 2:00 p.m., the bid opening for the Health Department for the climate control project down there. And the, but anyway, the originate meeting was really nothing significant there, other than they elected officers for the coming year, which they just, as a matter of fact, they were all the same officers that we've had. And they did question me about the letter that we were going to send. Well, they didn't question about the letter, they asked about the stance that we were taking on solar projects and wind projects. And I explained to them that we really hadn't took a stance. We were sending a letter to the Public Service Commission requesting that they be more forthcoming with the County Commission when they were permitting these solar and wind projects. And then I did the bid opening here for the Health Department, as I said. And as a matter of fact, it was, as we've, as we well know, the bid opening, the bids were over budget, as they have been for the last, the other project, the mobile unit, it was overbid. And we finally got that taken care of, but this one was overbid also, so they'll be looking for funding. And they did, they did ask me what they, what I thought about the Commission making up the difference. And I told them I didn't think that was an option, but that's just, that's just my opinion. It had to go. If you gentlemen remember, every time we've had these bids with the Health Department, we've done, we've been doing this thing for over, I'd say, two and a half years, and the bids always come in over. So anyway, there'll be, I think they have a Zoom call maybe tomorrow about that project. And I'll see if I can attend that and see what, see what their solution is to the, to the project as far as the bids being overbid. Attended the Forestland Protection Meeting, which there was nothing significant there, other than we're just, we went over the applications that we have, and we got some updates on that. And we also had, we had some right-of-way issues that we discussed. Attended ATSA meeting, where we, the board approved the employee pay raise, that the same pay raise that we gave the, gave the rest of the employees of the county. Basically, I think that's, that's about all I have.
Thank you, Commissioner Hart. The other thing, I did research, and I see that the CPC wind outfit for the Cape and Springs project was projecting that they would start in 2026. Don't quote me on that, but that's, that's what my research showed, or that's when the things will start to culminate for that project. And I believe it was their numbers that projected $800,000 in property tax, of which we know the school board would get the largest portion of. But I did see in their, in my research of their leaflet and paperwork, that's what they were reporting, that they projected for tax revenue.
That's correct.
Is that what you heard?
That's what I saw, too.
Is that just for our county?
Yes, sir. Yeah.
Okay. Because some of these are supposed to be on the Virginia side, correct?
Some, yeah, some of them.
Yeah, 10 to 20 is what I've seen there. But anyways, moving on here, Prosecutor Miller and Emily Carl. Hey, ladies. How you doing?
Good. Good evening, Commissioners. This is Emily Carl, Judge Carl's daughter. We've had her at our office since, was it May 8th she began? So she just received her Rule 10, which a Rule 10 is after her second or fourth semester, which was at the end of her second year, she can actually practice under Charlie and I. So we've had her in magistrate court, and she's done some preliminary hearings and some regular hearings, and we're getting her before the court. She can go in any court, so we're kind of getting her pumped up to go up to Circuit Court a little bit, too, so occasionally. So, but she will be here till mid-August, and then she'll be going back to school. So she's just on our, an internship with our office.
One more year at law school?
Yes.
Good, good. Well, thank you for helping out, and thanks for helping Becky.
Thanks for having me. Yeah, she's been a huge asset, so, already, so be good. Hopefully, we can convince her to be a prosecutor.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Have a good evening.
Mr. Clerk, looks like we have a light agenda today.
Well, I have plenty of housekeeping, so first thing I would present to you is a resignation
Mr. President, I move we approve and consent to the resignation of Diana Lucas. As prayer legal for the prosecutor's office.
I'll second the motion. I have a motion and a second to accept and consent to the resignation as presented by Mrs. Lucas. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Motion passed.
Mr. President, I move we approve the exonerations presented by the assessor.
Second? My motion and a second to approve the exonerations as presented by the tax assessor. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Motion passed.
We have our annual renewal contract from Global Science and Technology for support
I just need your signature.
Okay.
Is that what Zellman needs?
Doesn't look like anything's changed. Yeah.
Just needed your signature.
Is that, is this the same? Last year? I think that's standard.
Mr. President, I move we authorize the President to sign the contracts here for the Courthouse Network Support Administration. I think you have, I only see one place for his signature.
I'll second the motion for the contract with Global Technologies yearly renewal.
My motion and a second to accept the BOA Basic Order and Agreement as presented. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 That's right away for the ambulance building.
I guess just allow them right away to bring electric onto the property.
Mr. President, I'll move that the Commission allow and sign the right-of-way for the Potomac Edison to enter the property, county property off of Sunrise Boulevard for the ambulance building.
Second?
My motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Yeah, I think they put my name where the notary.
No. I could just say, here you are. This is an application Mr. Ronkin got of course to the County Commission and our entities to work with the surplus properties division of the State of West Virginia and some federal stuff. Gives us an opportunity to see what's in surplus inventory, things that we might be able to use. And so he went ahead and spearheaded that in an effort to help line up some openings.
So basically, just, we get notified of the surplus?
Yeah. We, yeah, and we can get on their site and see what they have. It's more conclusive than I realized.
Did, is this who, did we approve those representatives?
Yeah, those are, I think, the department heads that will log in and see what's going on.
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah. Those are the representatives.
People that'll have the access to check on it. I'll move that the Commission allow the President to sign for the application for eligibility for the surplus ability to check on that and also allow for those department heads to access that information.
And if I may, I'd like to add that the Commission would have to approve any surplus that they wanted to purchase.
Yes, that's, that's a good addition, Commissioner. I should have said that.
Okay, I'll second that motion.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor of the motion as presented by Commissioner Aglenger signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. They even find some furniture on there.
I think that was the Rodriguez apartment.
Yeah. Heavy equipment, generators. Be nice to find a generator.
Darren Taylor of the South Branch Dairy Report sent a grant contract agreement between the Division of Administrative Services for Justice and Community Services Section and the Hampshire County Commission in regard to the new grant for the upcoming year for the Dairy Port operations. You guys approved the application as well on that?
Yeah, this was the grant I met with him about, that I was alluding to in my report, for $190,000. I'll let you, I've already read it.
I've already, I've understood. The boy's done a good job since he's been there.
Yeah. Yeah. Big time, yeah. You seen Bob Patterson? Passed away.
Yeah.
Did you know Bob?
Yeah, I did.
Ninety-seven. Seventy-four. I think he was one of the last World War II veterans.
He almost passed away, oh, somebody told me that Sibyl Moore passed away out there.
Gentlemen, I will move that the Commission allow the President to sign for the Division of Administrative Services, Justice and Community Services Section. And then the grant contract between them and the Hampshire County Commission.
I'll second that motion.
Amount of a hundred ninety thousand.
I'll second.
I have a motion in a second to approve the President to sign the grant contract agreement as presented by the Criminal Justice Board Executive Director, Mr. Taylor. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passed.
Do you have a state summons?
Okay.
Mr. President, I move the Commission approve all probate orders, fiduciary payments and qualifications and all fiduciary bonds coming before the clerk and the vacation of the Commission since its last regular meeting.
Second. I have a motion in a second to... I won't attempt to repeat that motion, but all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye, motion passed.
This is one item, but the request from the Sheriff.
Are they all separate accounts? Seven hundred, seven-thirds, so it'll be four separate motions. You want separate motions for those? They're all different accounts.
David, I'll do it in one somewhere.
Okay. Whatever you want.
They were made through the budget.
Yeah, they're all budget revisions.
Mr. President, I move we approve the budget request from the Sheriff's Office on line item seven hundred being moved to seven hundred three forty-three to seven hundred two seventeen, seven hundred thirty-three forty-one being transferred to seven hundred thirty-two sixteen. Also, seven hundred two thirty-three transferred to seven hundred two seventeen. And then four oh four two fifteen, four oh four two eighteen, two nineteen, two twenty, two twenty-one transferred to four oh four three forty-one materials and supplies. You got all that?
I hear a second.
Second.
I have a motion in a second to approve the Sheriff's request for budget revisions in the matter that Commissioner Hart dictated. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye, motion passed.
I'll just note, gentlemen, it sounded like a lot, but it was only twelve thousand dollars, so.
Yeah, in its budget already.
It just sounded like a lot there when we were making the motion.
The only other thing I have on our list is the invoices.
Commissioners, I did forget, if you would indulge me for just a minute, like Mr. Ronkin, to give you an update on where we're going with the planning office, our next steps. Would you mind, Mr. Ronkin, briefing the Commission on matters of process? Not regarding anything legal, but where we're going.
Good evening again. So yesterday we had a conference call with the law firm. We have the option, and it looks like we will go forward with this, that we will do amendments to the subdivision of land development ordinance. In order to make sure that the engineering portion of that is correct, and we cross all the Ts and dot all the Is with that, has been highly recommended by our law firm that we hire an engineering firm or an engineer that is experienced in solar and wind. So we will be trying to put together a request for proposal as soon, as early as this week that will be published and hopefully we'll be able to hire an engineer that will help us write the amendments that we're going to need to do in order to manage any solar and wind projects. How you write these amendments, in a large degree, will determine whether or not it even is viable for a solar or a wind project to go forward in our county. And what do I mean by that? If we incorporate, because we have nothing right now, but if we incorporate setbacks, we incorporate fees, structured fees, annual fees. For example, excellent example of the fee would be annual fee based on either the number of acres, the number of solar panels. And that fee would be used to pay for fire equipment to actually fight any type of fire that would occur in a solar or wind project in the county. Because currently, there is nothing that we have found so far that would actually allow us to fight a fire with our equipment. So it would be these type of fees that would be incorporated, that we would put into amendments, that would be submitted to the Planning Commission for approval. We will have to announce a public hearing. We will have to give thirty days in order to do that. Once we have our public meeting, once we have developed in our changes to the ordinance, basically, the subdivision of land development ordinance, the Planning Commission would vote on it, and then they would send it up to the County Commission in order to, for the County Commissioners to enact these amendments to the subdivision of land development ordinance. In addition, at some point, we would have to address and update the comprehensive plan. It was updated in two thousand nineteen. It does not reflect anything in there via solar or wind. So that would be a project that does not have to occur before the subdivision ordinance gets amended, but it would be something that we would do at the Planning Commission level that would update to include solar. And the emphasis that was given to us by our legal advice was that we don't address the fact that this county is agricultural. So this could be where we would do that. And again, it's a plan. It's, it's not a law, the comprehensive plan. But the subdivision ordinance updated could conceivably hinder to a degree that a project that would be likely to come here may move down the road because we have four hundred foot setbacks from any, any, any... And again, I'm just using that as an example. I'm not saying that that would be the agreed upon. We're, we still have lots of work to do, but the Subcommittee met last Monday night and they were given basically homework, broken down by what we need to do in order to make sure that our amendments make sense. And that's where we're at.
So basically, what we're going to do is, is make the permitting process more stringent than what it is. And I would suggest that maybe when we're doing, when we're updating the subdivision ordinance, that we try to do the comp plan in conjunction with that. In other words, I think it would, I think that would be the, I think that that would be the proper way to do that.
I, I don't necessarily disagree with you, Commissioner. I would just say that may slow down the process.
Well, basically, the comp plan, the comprehensive plan don't need a whole lot of work. I mean, we've, we've done that, how many, we've updated it, what, three times? I think, I think twice. So I don't think it requires a whole lot of...
Is it every five years?
It is now, it is now, isn't it?
So it's about, the main thing is it's about due for updating.
Yes.
But you're, you're right. I mean, the Commission, it's, it's just a plan, you know, the Commission does what pleases the Commission, if you want to get, be blunt about it, but and, and the law states it ought not to be contrary to, or should be consistent with. Any ordinance we have should be consistent with and not contrary to the comp plan. But yeah, the main thing is to have public hearings to get more public input. And, you know, the main thing for me as one Commissioner is to push more responsible placement of these farms. Seems to be the number one concern of everybody, near a water source, near taking good farmland, near our tourism route. So I think if we can approach this recommended amendment to the full commission through those paths, I think that would be best. Large setbacks and, yeah, we can establish process and fees. But the big thing is, we started the, down the road of getting public input on a possible ordinance. So we also need to fulfill that obligation in the code and finish the public hearing sector of our, or section of our duties in the code for the ordinance, the possible ordinance. So we have survey, we're doing studies, we just need public hearings and I don't know that we couldn't do them at the same time. Kill two birds with one stone.
Yeah, that would be my suggestion, but I'm, you know, I'm only one Commissioner.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, I'm, anyways, I just wanted to give you guys an update on what we're doing. And of course, our meeting was postponed, so our letter, I wanted to get some input on that information before we, I finished formulating a draft of the letter. But yes, it's recommendations to the Commission.
And David, I think the public should know that we weren't even aware of the solar farm or anything going in until after the PSC had already given, had done all the permitting.
Yeah.
And we didn't, and the only way we found out was, is they, I think they came to us once.
They came to us for a tax break.
But they had already went through the PSC process and all that, all the permitting done. We didn't have a, we couldn't do anything. And we didn't have any, any say at all about it. And, and I think we all agree that we're not necessarily opposed to solar farms, but when they first started doing this, they, they talked about using mine reclamation sites and places where the land is hazardous and can be built, there's nothing else that can be built on there. But if you will look, it's, it's easy, it's a lot easier for them and a lot, it's a lot more economical for them to put these things on cleared land. They don't have to go any clear nowhere, they don't have to do nothing. And that's, in Pennsylvania, they're, they're running into the same problem. You know, they're using farmland to, to, to put these far, or these solar projects, and it's, the people there are upset too. But they haven't, they haven't done anything yet, so it's...
With the right amendments, we can, I, I feel that where the subdivision, subdivision ordinance, subdivision and land development ordinance has these important updates, I, I really think you can limit it to places that we thought they were going to end up in the first place.
That's where we're at in the process, gentlemen. Thank you, Mr. Ronkin, appreciate you. Invoices, gentlemen?
I would mention that the Bluegrass Festival, Parks and Rec Bluegrass Festival will happen this Saturday, Saturday and June. You got a walk in common? They have a good lineup? If they'd like to look at it, it looks possible.
Yes, yes, I've got several parking passes. I generally buy a bunch and give them out as little gifts. If anybody needs a parking pass, Mr. Gregg? Okay. Jesus God. We pay for, we pay for their audit. Magister Court? Yeah. Okay. I didn't know that. I didn't know we paid for that. Magister Court audit. Yeah, pricey. Yeah, good Lord. We pay that out of the account they pay us rent, the magister court?
No.
No?
It has to do with the school, the school, yeah.
Okay, okay.
It's in COVID and we...
We just tend, we tend to at the count. Okay. I didn't see that last couple of years.
It doesn't come out general.
We're basically, we pay our student.
I'm good.
I'm good. I'll move that we approve the invoices as presented since our last meeting.
Second.
A motion and a second to approve the invoices as presented. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed.
Mr. President, just as a point to last meeting, remember the summer harvest festival came requesting information regarding insurance. That's been handled, no cost to the commission, our, our package that we have with the school, and they handled it very well. So...
Thank you.
Thank you for looking into that, clerk.
Did any of you gentlemen want to say anything? Public comment? Good.
Move we adjourn?
I have a...
Second.
Motion and a second to adjourn. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye.